Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees El Paso County Community College District, and it's being held today, Tuesday, October 29th, 2024, beginning at 4:30. This regular meeting will be held at the admin-- is being held at the Administrative Service Center located at 950 Bytown Boulevard, Board of Trustees Room A200, El Paso, Texas, 79925, and will be viewable through the EPCC YouTube channel. Refer to the link, HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot YOUTUBE DOT COM slash user slash GOEPCC. This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Uxer.
Here.
Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Dr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Hagerty and Ms. Piña will not be joining us at today's meeting.
Okay. And can we have our counsel, legal counsel, lead us in the pledge?
Say it correctly.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the Constitution, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No charge for that, right?
Item 1.4, approval of minutes. This includes the August 28th, 2024 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 1.5, welcome to guests and staff members.
Welcome, everyone. And do we have anyone for open forum?
Item 1.6, open forum. Yes, we have. Brian Iverson, who will discuss Occupational Therapist Assistant.
Hello, good afternoon. So this is my first board meeting I've ever attended, but I wanted to have a few comments for you guys. So I've, I have found out from people that they're seeing a degree coming out. It's called Occupational Assistant Degree. To give a quick background about me, I graduated from high school two years ago. I right away went into EPCC on Trans Mountain and went to the Valle Verde. I'm still a student right now. And I heard of a new degree, yeah, called Occupational Assistant. But a few people have been telling me that it didn't get approved or it keeps getting delayed. And I've been sure, I've been wanting to be an occupational therapist assistant from high school, before high school. I graduated top 10% of my class in high school. So I'm, right now, I'm currently doing my basics still at EPCC. As a matter of fact, I have class tomorrow at night. So when I was in high school, I suffered some trauma that made me want to become an occupational therapist. I, I know a few people from UMC who were my therapists, and they also heard me on this. And what my, I'm almost done with my basics, but my point is that I need that degree approved as soon as possible, but someone told me that it's getting delayed. So I really hope to ask you guys if we could keep working to get that degree out as soon as possible for me, because I'm, like I said, I'm done with my basics this year, this year. But I'm kind of guessing what the occupational degree would include. And my goal for today was to hopefully get an answer from one of you guys about an update on this new degree. I know that nobody really knows, no one should know of the degree I'm talking about, but I found out, and I'm hoping to get an answer from any one of you today about an update regarding this.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Dr. Serrata will make sure that someone can text you with an answer, because we're not allowed to go into discussion unless it's an agenda item. Okay? But we appreciate you coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, optional presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Good evening, members of the Board, President Serrata, staff, and guests. I'm Laura Gaither, President of the Classified Staff Association. I'm going to introduce my officers for Classified Staff Council, who will probably not be here to, to their work engagements, but they are Cynthia Arras, who is Vice President at Mission del Paso, Laura Estrada, who is our Treasurer here at ASC, Elvira Fernandez, who is Rights and Responsibilities Officer here at ASC, Laura Gonzalez, who is Rights and Responsibilities Officer at Valle Verde, Kimberly McCroom, who is also a Rights and Responsibilities Officer at Trans Mountain, Cecilia Montoya, who is our Secretary, she's located at Valle Verde, Letitia Montoya, who is Right and Responsibilities Officer at Valle Verde as well, Ivar Angel is the Vice President at Rio Grande, and Norma Salas is Vice President and President Protem at Valle Verde, myself, Laura Gaither, President, and I am located at the Northwest Campus. All of our CSA officers will be taking donations until November 21st for the Turkey Drive. We will be having a Turkey Drive on November 22nd. Anyone can donate with any of our officers at any campus. We will only take frozen turkeys on November 22nd by 10 o'clock at each campus. This year, we will be donating to three nonprofit organizations, which are the Winchester House Transitional Living Center, also known as the Pride Center, located on Montana Street, El Buen Pastor Mission, located in Horizon, and El Paso State Supported Living Center, located on Delta Drive. We will also be donating new clothing items to the El Paso State Supported Living Center closer to Christmas. We want to remind everyone that we do this Turkey Drive for those who need it most. These organizations distribute these pantries and know that their, their community is very grateful for all the donations. We are thankful, thankful for your donation and grateful to be able to help families in need during this Thanksgiving holiday. We, and I speak for everyone in this council, love to be a part of this council, to help and listen to any classified staff member who might need a lending ear or guidance on a challenging situation at work. Our constituency group was happy to give us feedback on Professional Development Day. We were delighted to hear about the divisions that participated, participated in professional development. We want to thank those divisions that showed their gratitude, their staff gratitude for all the great things they have done within their department. Professional Development Day might be optional for some divisions, yet research shows that these dedicated days are essential for employees to promote growth, engagement, and continuous improvement, not only at work, but self-improvement as well. When you offer training and development opportunities, you build a reputation as an employer that cares about its employees. When an employee feels appreciated, students will also benefit from the high level of efficient service they receive. Employees are the institution's brand ambassadors. They represent and reflect all that's good about the institution. An interactive professional development aid helps foster an engaged district community, provides a mechanism for recognition among departments, and highlights the unique work of the institution. It is two days out of the year, the administration gets to show gratitude to staff participating in activities that will help them stay motivated and committed to their jobs, continuing to refine their skills and knowledge, increasing job satisfaction, leading to higher retention rates within departments that are already short-staffed. We have many resources within our district, and we're lucked for all divisions to participate in future professional development days, showing our employees that the great work they are doing has not gone unnoticed. This year, unfortunately, CSA will not be hosting a Christmas dance due to conflict with hall arrangements. As I'm sure some of you know, it takes a village to plan and prepare. Hopefully, next year, it will be bigger and better, and we will have a better turnout. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item 1.8, communications. Item 1.8.1, discussion and review regarding data, statistics, policies, and general information related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Dr. Graham and members of the Board, we were going to provide an enrollment update. We changed the date of the meeting. Dr. Maya is out on college business. And then, Mr. Uxer, I want to make sure that you know that Ms. Marufo from the SBDC is at a conference. She will be presenting at the December Board Meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Items 1.9.1 through 1.9.4 will be discussed after executive session. Item 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasurer's Report, No Action Is Required. This includes August 31st, 2024 Financial Statements. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Yes. Good afternoon, Dr. Graham, members of the Board. I'd like to begin my report by recognizing Mr. Pablo Armandaris and the Contract Opportunities Center. I'm pleased to report on the successful hosting of the 15th Annual Veterans Business Conference by the College's Contract Opportunities Center. The contract, the conference, rather, serves as a vital platform for businesses, contractors, and vendors interested in engaging with government agencies. It attracted nearly 200 attendees and featured 55 booths showcasing a diverse array of businesses, both veteran and non-veteran-owned. This year's participation underscores the increasing interest in fostering partnerships within our business community. Attendees included active-duty military personnel transitioning to civilian life, reinforcing our commitment to supporting veterans in their entrepreneurial pursuits. The 15th Annual Veterans Business Conference was a resounding success, strengthening the ties between our local business community and government agencies. The collaboration fostered during this event not only supports economic growth, but also underscores the college's commitment to empowering our veterans and local entrepreneurs. Congratulations to Mr. Pablo Armandaris, Director of the Contract Opportunities Center, for a successful event. Earlier this month, the EPCC Fashion Technology Program successfully hosted the Luncheon with Vogue at the Shops at Solana. This exclusive fashion event was designed to celebrate our program's rich legacy and foster connections within the local fashion community. We're honored to welcome El Paso native Carla Martinez de Salas, Head of Content at Vogue Mexico and Latin America, who served as our keynote speaker. Ms. Martinez de Salas led an empowering Q&amp;A session where she discussed her professional journey and the critical role of representation in the fashion industry. Her insights resonated deeply with attendees, particularly aspiring designers and creatives from the El Paso community. The Luncheon with Vogue not only celebrated our students and faculty, but also reinforced our commitment to promoting fashion, education, and El Paso. The event was a resounding success, demonstrating the potential for our program and the dedication of our faculty to mentor the next generation of fashion leaders. We look forward to continuing to foster partnerships that enhance our program and contribute to the local and global fashion community. Earlier this month, the EPCC Architecture Program proudly hosted the exhibit titled "Design for Learning: The Architectural Legacy of El Paso Community College" at Artspace Lofts. This event, which opened on October 4th and ran through October 13th, celebrated the significant architectural contributions of EPCC to the El Paso community and highlighted the achievements of our architecture students. Featuring work from 30 current and past EPCC architecture students, the exhibit provided a platform for students to display their creative and innovative designs. This not only showcased their individual talents, but also illustrated the quality of education provided by the EPCC Architecture Program. The Design for Learning exhibit successfully highlighted the significant architectural impact of the college on our community while showcasing the exceptional work of our students. It served as a celebration of past achievements and as an inspiration for future generations of architects. The exhibit was co-curated by a talented team, including Alejandra Cortez, an Associate AIA, Christian A. Mijares, also Associate AIA, Elias Padilla, AIA, and Professor Josué J. Munoz Miramon. Sponsorship support was generously provided by AIA El Paso, El Paso Community College, PSRBB Architects, and Mijares &amp; Mora Architects. I'm pleased to report that the leaders from UTEP and the college have officially welcomed the inaugural cohort of students to the newly established EPCC UTEP Engineering Academy. This innovative program aims to enhance access to engineering education for students in the Paso del Norte region by allowing them to pursue their degrees concurrently at both institutions. The EPCC UTEP Engineering Academy enables students to enroll at both the college and UTEP, starting their engineering education at EPCC before seamlessly transferring to UTEP to complete a bachelor's degree in Civil, Industrial Materials, Electrical, or Mechanical Engineering. By combining the strengths of EPCC and UTEP, we're not only creating new opportunities for students, but also fostering a new generation of innovators ready to drive success in engineering. We're excited about the potential impact this program will have on our students and the broader community. Thank you, Dr. Graham and Mr. Uxer, for making time to attend and representing the Board. Congratulations to Dr. Christian Servin for being recognized as a 2024 McDonald's Triunfadori winner in the category of STEM Education. This recognition was awarded by a committee of community members during an annual ceremony sponsored by local McDonald's owner, operator, Richard Castro, and various community organization, organizations. The event celebrates individuals who serve as outstanding role model and inspire our youth. Congratulations, Dr. Servin, for your achievements, and we look forward to supporting your ongoing efforts to advance STEM education in our community. I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Yvette Huerta, the college's Director of Institutional Effectiveness, has been selected to participate in the prestigious Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities, HACU, and LASE Mid-Level Leadership Program. Dr. Huerta is one of only 54 participants chosen nationwide, reflecting her commitment and contributions to higher education. The LASE Mid-Level Leadership Program is a six-month leadership development initiative aimed at enhancing the number and quality of Latino-Latina professionals in leadership roles at Hispanic-serving institutions and across higher education. The program is vital for promoting diversity, equity, as well as inclusion in our leadership positions, and aligns perfectly with our goals at the college. Dr. Huerta being chosen for the HACU and LASE Mid-Level Leadership Program is an outstanding achievement for both her as well as the college. Congratulations, Dr. Huerta. I'm excited to share that the college has been selected as one of four colleges to participate in the Translating Opportunity Texas Project initiated by the Texas Success Center, a division of the Texas Association of Community Colleges. This initiative aims to enhance educational outcomes for multilingual learners of English across Texas community colleges. Funded by Ascendium's education philanthropy, the project focuses on creating equitable pathways, pathways for MLE students through targeted research, professional development, and strategic planning. The Translating Opportunity Project will offer comprehensive support to participating colleges, including research on the best practices for MLE student support, professional development opportunities for faculty and staff, and strategic planning to implement evidence-based interventions. The college's participation in the Translating Opportunity Texas Project represents a significant step forward in our commitment to supporting multilingual learners. We're excited about the impact this initiative will have on our students as well as the broader community. The government discipline successfully hosted a district-wide voter registration drive across four of our campuses. This initiative aimed to engage and empower our students by providing them with the opportunity to register to vote. In total, 240-plus students were registered at the Valle Verde, Trans Mountain, Northwest, and Mission del Paso campuses. The voter registration drive was supported by several community organizations, enhancing its outreach and effectiveness. The EPCC Paso's Program, Member of the Student Government Association, the Legal Women Voters, the NAACP, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and the County Elections Office played vital roles in supporting this initiative. I'm pleased to announce that the college has been awarded a $50,000 grant from Microsoft to enhance our capacity in artificial intelligence initiatives. This funding will support our project entitled "Constructing Artificial Intelligence Capacity for the Workforce and Educational Sector in the Border Region." The project aligns seamlessly with our ongoing Hack the Border initiatives, which focus on increasing cybersecurity awareness in the age of AI. Students and community members will have opportunities to participate in activities that incorporate AI tools and techniques into practical scenarios. These include hackathons, data-tons, and AI analytics competitions. This grant represents a significant opportunity for EPCC to lead in the development of AI education and workforce readiness in our region. Congratulations to Dr. Servin. Dr. Graham, that concludes my report. I'm happy to respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Not a question, but I would, as an attendee to the Engineering Academy thing, I, I want to congratulate you and everything else that, excuse me, but I want to, I made a point sort of in conversation there, and I'd like to get it on record again. I, I am a professional engineer. I am a registered engineer. I made my living as an engineer. I ran an engineering company, and I am a published engineer. And I wanted to say that all with respect, because I found that a lot of what I have is something I'd like to see incorporated in this program officially. We can talk about engineering and, and those things, but I would like to see an actual requirement for public presentation and for written communication, because as an engineer, and in a strict sense, as an engineer, that helps you get ahead. But I think in a larger sense, the ability to communicate with others is important to be able to get along. And I just happened to notice tonight, excuse me, that in the larger sense, this idea of communication, we had a good example there, and I know this young man that just talked to us, and I apologize for not remembering your name, but as I was thinking about it, I watched him, and I think he got up here and he exemplified real courage, okay? It's something you need to do if you're talking about a group that you're not familiar with. He did the important thing. He had courage to get up there. He identified a problem. He identified the presence, the, the importance of the problem, the need for the problem, his interest in the problem, and a request for action, okay? And that's what get things done. He's a perfect example. He needs to be congratulated for getting up and speaking about it. But that's what we need, and that's what in now, back at the Engineering Academy, you can, you can, I, I'm here to tell you, you can do the books and, and do the equations all you want to, but if you can't get across to the boss or somebody else, they will die with you at your desk.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Item 1.11, Consent Docket, There is None. Section 2, Administration. Item 2.1, CGC, CHA, FFDA, FLB, Local TSB Board Policies, Second Reading and Approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 2.2, DBA, DBB, DC, DEA, DEA, DEAB, DK, DMC, EBA, ECC, Local TSB Policies, for First Reading Review and Comment.
No action on that.
Section 3, Personnel. Item 3.1, Information Items. Institutionally externally funded full-time staff and faculty appointments, extensions, resignations, and retirements. No action is required. Section 4, Financial Services. Item 4.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Purchase from Bloom USA Inc. Equipment and Services to Install the SP Control System in an Amount Not to Exceed $157,248.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second? Ms. Robles, second. Any discussion?
I'm second.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 4.2, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award a Contract to Taco Family Inc., Doing Business as Taqueria Don Chicho III, and to the Basil Garden LLC, Doing Business as Juice Society, to Provide On-Site Food Services on a Concession Basis at the Northwest Campus and Rio Grande Campus Respectfully.
Move to approve.
Mr. Mendez, seconded.
Sorry, second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at it, and we actually have in our notes on page 102, we have the results of the scoring, looking for Taco Family Doing Businesses, Taqueria, I didn't pronounce it right, and then for the second one. And so I have some questions about, I'm not sure who, who attended that, but I look on this, the first scoring thing, when we looked at food services Northwest Campus, we have, there was a base on 100 points, and so for the reputation of the vendor, out of possible 10 points, there was eight points awarded. I wonder, you know, is there a question with reputation? Item 3, the quality of that, 25 points, and it only got 20 points. Is there a question about the quali, we don't have adequate quality? No, this is page 102, Dr. Serrata. Okay. And then pay, and then item 4, the extent which the goods and services meet the, 35 points, and it was awarded 29, six points less. Is there a question about that? We go then to the Rio Grande Campus, and we had that 100 points qualified, and we selected somebody that scored only 71.95 points. In, in a classroom, 70 points is, is your C, not-so-great class, you know? I mean, I realize that this is the only people we got, only thing, but, you know, 70 points to supply food services? Again, the reputation, in this case, the, the reputation for the Taco Family was six, whereas the reputation for the Taco Family at the Northwest Campus is 8.4. Is there a difference in the reputation as to where they are going to, to do that? It's the same number of points, but, but did their reputation rise or fall depending on the campus? The quality of the store, 17.5 points versus 20 points. Again, do they serve better quality at one campus than the other? I don't understand that. And the extent to which they can do the goods and services, those were nominally the same, but I don't understand. I don't understand why that we're, number one, I don't understand why we're accepting something at 70. If this is the only one there, do we then even want to offer food services? Number one, yeah, we do. I mean, I'm, I'm the one very much interested in food, food security, insecurity, but we don't want food inadequacy, okay? And I don't understand why we're accepting 71 points. Is there something we do to work with people, or we can do something else, get better? And then why are we looking at what I consider on a classroom scale that, now, I, I understand that, but, and I understand there's really no comparability, other than we see the, the local food service in the city goes through, and then once, once a quarter, they go and evaluate all the restaurants, and we look at anybody who has less than 90, 95, 95 points, you know, you don't think you're going to take your family there to eat a hamburger or something. Here, we're looking at, said, okay, 80 points or 70 points, I don't know. And I know that the point considerations are totally different, they're not comparable, we're not even apples, we're not fruits and anything else, but I tell you what, I don't understand why we're, somebody that's quality, I mean, the reputation is not, not there, the quality is different, it varies between location. What's happened? Do we have the same group, or is there-- Do we have the same group, or is there, why is there difference? And should we be accepting stuff like this? Or should we be trying to work with people to provide, if this, if something better? If we're going to provide, see that our students get food services, don't we want, you know, good stuff? I mean, I'm not saying this is not good, but I don't know, it seems like that there's room for growth.
Mr. Exer, those are really, really good questions, and they're quantitative based upon two different committees. Each location was comprised of a dean, a, for that campus, a student government representative for that campus, and then consisted of the Director of Auxiliary Services, Mr. Juan Flores, and then AVP of Budget and Financial Services, Ms. Anas Unigas. So there were two different committees responding to your question on the reputation, where one received an eight, another one received a six. You have different committees that were scoring, that were ultimately averaged into a composite score for location. As far as the grading, the 70, these two vendors have been providing us already their known quantities. Their known quantities to us, they are providing us services at other campuses, and we know their service, so the quality of their services has been good, Mr. Exer.
So they're good, but they don't get the numbers?
Based upon the submission of the documentation that they provided, the committee reacted to the materials that were placed in front of them and compared them to the nine criteria that we follow to evaluate, and so the committee's interpretation of the document that each vendor provided, their menu, and how the venue and the menu met the needs of that campus, were interpreted by the committee and individually graded and resulted in the scoring.
I guess if I were to receive these two occupants, and then just looking at the first one, the one that's common between both, we had two different committees that had, I'll choose one particular deal, the reputation and the quality, and it's a different value, but then I would actually want both groups to get together and say, hey, how come y'all evaluate differently? Did one know something better than the other? Yeah, I realize individual, just because that's committee, we got to take their word, and that's nothing else. I think I would have chased that down to find out why one has less, and if they're supplying good quality and doing really good at other locations, is 71 as a total score reflective of doing good somewhere else?
No, those are, those are good comments and hard to answer. The rules that we follow are prescribed by the purchasing area, where we don't co-mingle committees from different campuses, so we try to honor the integrity of the process.
Is there, is there part of the rules say that the committees, after they're through, they can't get together and at least talk as to why they couldn't come up? Do you have rules saying you can't ever talk to anybody else and find out what else they may know that I don't know? The rule says you can't do that?
I would have to defer to Mr. Gallardo about the rules or the purchasing person. So, Mr. Exer, one thing to keep in mind is that these are two different proposals submitted by the same vendor for two separate procurement processes with different titles. One, the Rio Grande Campus, they were looking for a coffee and pastry location, and the Northwest Campus was looking for a full eatery. So it's different needs, different proposals, different submittals, like looking at two resumes for the same candidate, the resumes being tailored by that candidate for a particular...
So the quality of that organization will depend on what service they can provide?
Yes.
So if they were, if they'd have a better quality, if you wanted to come just to sandwiches to that, and it's something, their quality then changes with something else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and these are rules. Who makes up those rules?
So these are not rules. If we're looking for an orange and an apple submits, then they're not going to be, that apple is not going to be as qualified as the orange, right?
Okay, so, you know, I understand, and we'll go there. It just seems to me that we have these evaluations, and frankly, I would, I'm not impressed on buying somebody doing whatever it is for somebody that's AD. If they've been there for a while and they've done good, to get an AD? I mean, we all work on K-12 type things, the AD is just, you just got to be, you know, and we want a food service, we want A-level services.
So to give you a little perspective on that, for the Rio Grande Campus, I think that's the one where the 71 score came to play. This is our fourth attempt at getting an eatery for that campus.
So we're willing to accept something?
We are, we don't have to accept it if the board doesn't want to.
Okay.
And we can go out a fifth time, but I'm thinking we may probably not get anything different.
I realize this is the only one, and, you know, and I've been privy to this, and we've been, you and I and some of the others have been chasing this since I first went to Northwest Campus almost 10 years ago, and we're not, you know, when Conchita left, we sort of got, you know, we haven't been up to Conchita's level, I'm sorry, we haven't, I'm sorry, if taco is standing here, but we haven't been up to Conchita's level since then.
It's a difficult challenge, yes, sir, especially for the business providing the services to keep a profitable...
Okay, then what are we going to do to do better? To get something better than 70? I mean, we can accept this and go ahead, I'm sorry, I take my time, but we can accept this, but let's see if we can't do better for the kids.
We made multiple phone calls to businesses out of the purchasing department, hoping that one of them would submit a proposal. As a matter of fact, I think our campus deans also reached out to people they know from around that campus at Rio Grande, and like I said, this is our fourth RFP.
What's, what's, what would be the response to the question, how can we improve the RFP request to get better performance?
We pay the vendor to be on campus.
Oh, okay. That'd be, sounds like a winner. We can get the money.
Right now, they pay us.
Well, we can pay them.
We can.
We subsidize it. We go, there's a bunch of, bunch of money floating in Washington, D.C., right? Who's, who's, who's Saroyan Hozar, have her write another grant request for that? She's good at that. Okay, I'm sorry, it just seems to me that the numbers just don't reflect them doing good jobs elsewhere.
As far as Taco Family is concerned, and I may be speaking out of turn, but I believe that Dr. Tenna, who is the dean of that campus, is very happy with her service.
She, are they as good as Conchita?
No.
Okay, there you go. Wait a minute, wait a minute. You took me around almost 10 years ago, and if we have a problem on that campus, how come you haven't called me? How come it isn't as good as Conchita? How come you haven't called me and told me that we, you know, I'm the one, that's my school, you need to call me and say, hey, we need to do something, except wait until I get one of these things for them.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification. Call that question, please. I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, this evaluation, these evaluations are based on the proposal documentation that they put in, right? Not somebody actually going and trying the product and going and saying, what is the service like? What is the food like? This is based on, somebody wrote, somebody's proposal, these evaluations are based on that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, and that explanation is also found on the agenda book. Call the question, please.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section 5 Physical Facilities, there is none. Section 6 Curriculum and Instruction. Item 6.1 Discussion and Action on the Approval of the Revised New Credit Program Certificate in Social Media in the Amount of $85,657.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Dr. Smith, can you give us a little bit of background on what that's going to entail? It sounds exciting.
Absolutely, Dr. Graham. First of all, I want to mention at the bottom of the agenda, and you'll see that the board had actually approved this program as a Level 1 certificate some meetings back, we're presenting it now because we realized that one of the courses in the program requires students to pass the TSI, pushing it into a Level 2 certificate. So we're bringing this back just to clarify with the board that the approval is for a Level 2 certificate. But as most folks in the audience are probably aware, social media is a huge burgeoning industry, and we're getting a number of requests for companies that need social media experts out, whether it's podcasting, whether it's a web presence on Instagram, or Facebook, or X. Students will be trained to facilitate those sorts of things for programs and businesses.
So is there going to be two levels, or it's only one level?
It's just one, Dr. Graham, it's a Level 2 certificate.
A certificate? So there's not like a pre-certification?
No, there's not.
Nobody could teach that class. Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 6.2 Discussion and Action on the Approval of a New Academic Program in Polysomnography Sleep Study Tech in the Amount of $73,257.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 6.3 Discussion and Action on the Approval of a New Occupational Skills Award in Birth to 3 Teacher.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 6.4 Discussion and Action on the Approval of a New Occupational Skills Award in Microsoft Office Suite, Microsoft Office Specialist.
Move to approve.
Aye. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 6.5 Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THECB, Carl D. Perkins Basic Grant in the Amount of $894,771.
Move to approve.
6.5, 6.6, 6.7, 6.8, and 6.9.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will read items. Item 6.6 Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of a Grant from the U.S. Department of Labor, DOL, in the Amount of $160,000. Item 6.7 Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of a Grant Award from the James A. Buddy Davidson Foundation in the Amount of $63,575. Item 6.8 Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of a Grant Award from the Texas Workforce Commission, TWC, in the Amount of $31,500. Item 6.9 Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of a Grant Award from the Math Circle Network of the American Institute of Mathematics, AIM, in the Amount of $1,000.
Dr. Graham, members of the board, I'd ask Dr. Smith to weigh in on these grants as you see appropriate. Obviously, Carl Perkins is one that we receive on a regular basis, but a lot of work went into it as well.
Yeah, first of all, of course, I want to thank the Grants Office for all of the assistance that they do for all of these grants. Carl Perkins, of course, is one of our largest grants that is geared to serve CTE students, and so we're grateful for the state to funnel that money to us. It's based on the headcount of CTE students that we have at the institution, and you'll see...
Is it higher than the previous?
Yes, as we see increased student enrollment in CTE programs, that amount increases.
Increased.
And you see several VPs identified as resource persons on there, so we actually have those funds dispersed not only in instruction, but also in institutional research and student services as well to facilitate the success of those students. So thanks to those folks for chiming in. The James Buddy Davidson Foundation, let me ask Dean Joshua Villalobos to stand up and be recognized. I won't venture to guess how many years in a row we've gotten this, but it started when he was a geology faculty member and has continued to this day, so thank you, Dean Villalobos, for putting that together for us. And then I want to thank Ms. Fan Chen for the Math Circle Grant that she's got. For those of you that may know Professor Chen, she is a force to be reckoned with in the math area. If you subscribe to her X channel, you'll see she's having tutoring sessions on the weekends and the evenings at the public schools, in libraries, she's all over the place, so we want to thank her for her efforts around there. She is not here this evening. And then, let's see, which one did I miss? Mr. Exer, you caught me off guard by approving all of them at the same time. Of course, I would like to recognize Mr. Primidzic, Mr. Blaine Primidzic, Associate Vice President of Workforce and Continuing Education for the Skills for Small Businesses. Those of you that don't know, Mr. Primidzic, as a dean at the Valle Verde Campus, started collecting childcare grants and continues to this day. We know that's an incredibly important need in our community and for our students.
In that light, there was two, the U.S. Department of Labor for 160 and the James A. Buddy Foundation, if you want to comment on those.
Yeah, the Buddy Foundation, one was the one for Dean Villalobos, which we recognized, and then the...
Department of Labor.
Department of Labor Grant, the Susan Harwood Grant, that's another one that we've had for many, many years. It centered around risk management and safety in the workplace. And so, as you may know, we also receive a large amount of money for the Risk Management Institute from Texas Mutual, and so those two grants taken together let us do great things for risk management and safety in the region.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, sir, and please convey our gratitude to all that contributed time and effort to getting these funds and getting these programs going.
Will do. Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Good job. It's a lot of money.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section 7 Student Services. Item 7.1 Discussion and Action on the Approval to Purchase and Install a New LED Scoreboard and LED Illuminated Sponsored Light Boxes from Big Media, EP Big Media Inc., for the EPCC Baseball Field located at the Valle Verde Campus in an Amount Not to Exceed $101,574.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, please.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 7.2 Discussion and Action on the Approval of Continuing Education CE Tuition Rates for New Courses.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 7.3 Discussion and Action on the Approval of Continuing Education CE Tuition Rates for Revised Courses.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section 8 Community Service, there is none. Would the board like to go into executive session? Executive and closed session, the Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice, or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda, if the subject matter is permitted, for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item one point three point one, discussion with legal counsel regarding dismissal of lawsuit styled Jesus A. Ortiz versus El Paso County Community College District in the United States District Court for the Western District of Texas in El Paso County, Texas, cause number three two four CV zero zero one eight four, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point two, discussion with legal counsel regarding a lawsuit styled Catalina Valtierra Piñón versus El Paso County Community College District in the one hundred and sixty eighth Judicial District Court, El Paso County, Texas, cause number two zero two four DCV two seven nine eight, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point three, discussion with legal counsel regarding an EEOC charge filed by Marsha Clark, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two four zero zero six eight three, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point four, discussion with legal counsel regarding an EEOC charge filed by Fariba Ansari, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two four zero one nine one zero, and lawsuit styled Fariba Ansari versus El Paso County Community College District in the one hundred and sixty eighth Judicial District Court, El Paso County, Texas, cause number two zero two four DCV two four two five, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point five, discussion with legal counsel regarding an EEOC charge filed by Catherine Gutierrez, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two five zero zero five six, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point six, discussion with legal counsel regarding dismissal of EEOC charge filed by Remundo Vázquez, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two four zero one eight three six, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. The time is now five twenty three, and the board is in executive session. It's six thirty nine, and the board is back from executive session. We'll go under item one point nine, Board of Trustees Business. Item one point nine point one, discussion and take possible action regarding a lawsuit styled Catalina Valtierra Piñón versus El Paso County Community College District in the one hundred and sixty eighth Judicial District Court, El Paso County, Texas, cause number two zero two four DCV two seven nine eight.
No action.
Item one point nine point two, discussion and take possible action regarding EEOC charge filed by Marsha Clark, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two four zero zero six eight three.
No action.
Item one point nine point three, discussion and take possible action regarding EEOC charge filed by Fariba Ansari, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two four zero one nine one zero, and lawsuit styled Fariba Ansari versus El Paso County Community College District in the one hundred and sixty eighth Judicial District Court, El Paso County, Texas, cause number two zero two four DCV two four two five.
No action.
Item one point nine point four, discussion and take possible action regarding EEOC charge filed by Catherine Gutierrez, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two five zero zero five six.
No action. And that concludes our board meeting. A reminder that our next board meeting is scheduled for December the fourth at four thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.